The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is um our special board meeting for the evening and we're going to start with first of all, we're joined by our interim superintendent Vicki Byer. Um all members of the um the school board are in attendance. We've got a couple of inner city student council members. Uh can you go ahead and introduce yourselves? I'll do a real call in just a second.
Good evening. My name is Macy Saha. I'm a senior at Preble and I'm the president of Intercity Student Council.
Good evening. I'm Jesus Rios, a senior at East High School and I'm a member of Y C I C.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is a real call. Smith. Here. Becker.
Here.
McCoy. Here. Leighton Warren. Here. Welch. Here. Lyerly.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Okay, all board members are present. Um next on our agenda is um our action items for the special board meeting. The first item is Southwest High School Roof Replacement. Josh is going to fill us in on that.
Yes, thank you. Um we received bids on the RFP for the South Southwest Roof Replacement. This would be funded by the November twenty twenty two referendum. Um there was one responsible bidder that replied in the amount of nine hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. That is Northern Roofing. And we are recommending that we go with this bidder for this project.
Okay. All right, um I think it's probably an appropriate time. It's always an appropriate time to thank the public for supporting public education in this district. Um which allows us to do this sort of work and we're going to take a number of votes on on those kinds of projects tonight. Um anyway, uh I think we need to go ahead and uh read the motion and then uh second and we'll have a discussion.
I move that the Northern Metal and Roofing Company be awarded the bid for roof replacement work at Southwest High School in the amount of nine hundred fifteen thousand one hundred fifty dollars as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, any questions, Andrew?
Um but my question will be the same whenever we see um we whenever we see a single bidder historically. Excuse me, historically, I don't remember seeing a lot of single bidders, maybe maybe once in a while. Does this fit into a a range that you're comfortable with? And if a single bidder is outside of range that we're comfortable with, is it sometimes um a case where we would try again if we're not happy with the bid?
Yeah, dear, yeah. There you go.
The answer is yes to both of your questions. Um this project has been a challenge. This is actually the third time we've tried to do this project. The last time um we put this out for bid, I believe, was in November of twenty one and we received no bids. So we were actually pretty happy to get a bid that was within um a price range that we were comfortable with.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, uh Kinsey. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay, um the next item on the agenda is B Franklin Middle School Roof Replacement. Um go ahead and read the motion and we can have some. Oh, wait a second. Josh, go ahead.
It's very similar situation here, except we did have two bidders. They were um fairly close. We are recommending going with a low bidder, which is H I S.
Okay, go ahead, Nancy.
I move that H I S Corporation be awarded the bid for roof replacement work at Franklin Middle School in the amount of one million seven thousand seven hundred ninety nine dollars as presented be approved.
A second.
Okay, any discussion, any questions? Okay, Kinsey. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Um Josh, quick question. On these two that we've just voted on, um what when would work begin on those? If everything goes as planned?
Yeah, the these are these roofing projects are typically um starting in the late spring, going through summer.
So you anticipate the spring?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. All right, the um number our C is Engineering and Design Services for Athletic Fields and Stadiums. Go ahead, Josh.
Okay, um this is um just that, the engineering and design services for the three athletic fields and stadiums that were included in the last referendum that would include Southwest Baseball Field, West Football and Preble Football. We combined the projects together for the purposes of this RFP. Um we are recommending the bid be awarded to the Rettler Corporation.
Okay. Um go ahead, Nancy.
I move that Rettler Corporation be awarded the bid for engineering and design services for an estimated cost of five hundred ninety three thousand four hundred fifty one dollars, which is five point six six percent of the total cost of construction as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, questions, Andrew?
Uh thank you. This is um can you explain just a little bit about the the categories because this is the probably the first one that I saw where there was um you know, a very substantial difference in in price and you were going with a a more expensive one. I'm not I'm not saying we should never do that if the qualifications are better, but I haven't asked about that the couple of times I've seen it where it was right right on the bubble, but the cost here is not right on the bubble. So I just wanted to learn more about what makes this one superior.
Yes, thank you. And obviously, these are kind of the most high profile um projects coming out of that last referendum. Um not to mean that they're the most important, um but they are very important. And there was an outlier here in terms of the fee proposal. I'm assuming you're referring to Excel, which came in at three point five percent. Um whereas the rest were somewhere between five and a half and seven. Um the the reason and you'll you see the score in rubric there um with the project history and staff expertise um with the Excel um proposal. It was um it was first of all scant on details. Um and they had only listed one field project that they had worked on um prior, so um.
Good enough for me. If you want to, if you're, I mean, a company is going to bid a ten million dollar project, then send us some some samples of your work. And if you haven't done enough of them yet or haven't done big enough ones yet, then get some practice and bid us next time. So thank you.
And we're very comfortable with with Rettler. They're, I believe, the ones that worked on the Southwest Football Field Project. Um and I think they did the they did the initial designs on on the Preble project when we were attempting to fundraise.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Kinsey. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Okay, next on the agenda, D Employment of Staff. Nancy?
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Yes.
As we come up to the resignation of staff, I just want to confirm that we're asking about exit surveys and we're kind of keeping record of that, especially um when we're coming into where we usually don't have as many resignations and HR is still pushing for those and we can get that information at some point with it. Okay.
All right, uh and then finally, um so E resignation of staff, Nancy?
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions. Okay, Kinsey. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Okay, that completes our special our special meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Hi, opposed, we're adjourned. Um I'd like to uh call this meeting to order um and welcome you to our um January work session for uh January ninth twenty twenty three. Um we're joined by our interim superintendent Vicki Byer and members of her cabinet and two members of the Inner City Student Council. Let's go ahead and do it.
Hello, I'm Macy Saha. I'm a senior at Preble and I'm the president of Intercity Student Council.
Hello, I am Jesus Rios, a senior at East High School, a member of Per of Intercity Story Council.
Thank you. I'll do the roll call, Kinsey. Mills.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
Welch. Here. Leighton Warren. Here. McCoy. Here. Becker.
Here.
Here. Okay, all um board members are present. Um the next item is our open forum. Is there anyone who was hoping to speak tonight in the audience? Okay, doesn't look like there's anyone. Uh we will move on to our first agenda item, which is um the um report of the education. Um not the Education Committee, but under education and that will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
Uh thank you. We have um one item. We have a discussion item on the curriculum cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Dr. Wigan and Dr. Chartier will provide the Board of Education with a high level overview of the district's curriculum cycle. This is all in preparation for upcoming recommendations coming forward in February. Ladies?
Okay, thank you. Um and good evening. So the purpose of the presentation is to really provide a high level high level overview, as um Vicki had mentioned, of our district's curriculum cycle um as it relates to the Board of Education and your role in governance, um specifically under um Department of Public Instruction. Um chapter P L eight, School District Standards. And of course, there are two specific school board policies, Policy three thirty Curriculum Development and Instructional Improvement and Policy three six one Instructional Material Selection. We did receive some questions in advance, which we're very appreciative of. We're going to try to answer those during the time that we've been provided, but if we don't, we would like to extend an invitation to any board member who would like to come in and meet and have a more in-depth discussion regarding the process.
Okay, thank you. We're having trouble.
There you go. Is it working now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, um like Dr. Wigan said, it's a very high overview. And again, I want to extend a welcome to meeting with uh team, my team members that work most closely in this work um to come in and and visit with us because we do have more specific and detailed uh information that we could share with you um as we go through that uh through that presentation. First of all, uh the um the curriculum uh cycle, there are really five phases to the curriculum cycle. So you often wonder, what are we doing behind the scenes here? There's the first part I I'm going to address a little bit tighter, but uh there's the planning phase. Um then there's a development phase. And then you're you have your you have your uh resource um review or adoption, and that's what will be coming in February. We have the implementation phase and then, of course, evaluation. And then for the next four years, once they have curriculum that's written and adopted, they will be what we call an implementation. So they'll take about four to five years and we monitor it as it's going, but they're not in the full review cycle. So what do we do in phase one? Phase one is really where we dig in. It's our initial research. It's this piece that is continually ongoing for people that work in the curriculum assessment and instruction uh field. Um we definitely dig into all of our Wisconsin State Standards um and our current learning expectations, um looking at all the changes that have been made over the the past uh years um of during uh by teachers and facilitated by T N L in the past. We also uh take a very in-depth look at our student achievement data. Um we have an evaluation document in which we evaluate our current uh resources and explore various um always exploring, but all there's always new pieces coming on the market. So you have to stay on top of it so that when it's time to purchase you, you have the best of the best that meets your needs. Um and also um we determine, this is the team determines who's going to be on the curriculum writing team um as well um as all the forms that we will be providing for teacher feedback and teacher forward. The next phase is the development. Uh this is probably the most commonly um shared component of the entire phase, and that's the development uh where you really dig into your professional learning standards. Um your content essential documents, which would be indicating what we expect all students know and be able to do uh as is aligned to the course that they are representing so that it doesn't matter where your zip code is. You will um if you're taking Algebra One, we have same exposure to the same learning expectations as any other student taking Algebra One across the district. Okay. Um this is also the interim assessments that measures. Um obviously, that would measure your learning priorities. Um this is where teachers create a blue uh uh course syllabus as to what would be taught. And then um as you know, we adopted a canvas in one of our last meetings and the blueprint is actually the like the lesson plan, shall I say, that's housed in Canvas and um we have more of that coming probably in March. Um to give you an update on where we're where we're going there, but the blueprint, that's where all of our curriculum would be housed in Canvas as part of that development uh phase. Resource uh component um is really the the part that it can take. First of all, we have to identify and review a view all of the available resources that are on the market today. Some come off, expire. We have to look at the longevity and the plan. Um we determine a rating system. So what did we say? We wanted students know and be able to do what tool is going to help our teachers to ensure that the students get there and learn that. Um also, we gather teacher feedback throughout this whole presentation. You come to visit us, we'll show you some of the documents that are used and some of the the teachers' feedback. Um also, we have uh vendor presentations. And if you're interested, we have a couple of vendor presentations coming up on a couple of our our um it resource reviews that we have in place. We have a world language. Um if you're interested in seeing a vendor presentation on our world language uh resource, um Spanish specifically, because French is not totally developed yet. However, the content and the process will be the same for either language. Yes.
Will you just shoot us some of those dates?
Absolutely.
Get them on their calendar, say, if they care to um uh you know, observe that process.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um and then we have a couple of our pieces that will be coming to you in in February that are in the trial or the pilot. Teachers who have gone through this process volunteer to be part of the pilot and they get they have their own exclusive training with the vendor training, then they implement and we we support, but we learn from them as they're implementing the resource. And then we look for their feed forward as to if this resource met the teachers' needs or met what we set out what we set out as a team that that this should meet and will this meet teachers' needs um in making sure all students um have exposure to the learning. And then, and this will happen next February at this time, um like the team will be here and bringing a present and sitting in front of you with an in-depth of the process of the recommendation, all that came before the adoptions um for uh three content areas for right now. Um math, high school math, uh world language. And um there's one that I think we have a little more work to do before I want to publicly say that's going to be coming for a full for the adoption. The access to S R funds have helped us to accelerate and rejuvenate some of the work that we had been doing like in twenty nineteen, but when you dig back into the archives, if there are missteps, we go back and we complete those steps. So some of those would be there. And then, of course, the implementation, teaching and learning works with um procurement to make sure that um we have all of the resources and we also oversee um the distribution process, responsible for ensuring that there's ongoing professional learning. Typically, your vendor, your first year with your vendor, they first three years, they provide really intensive professional learning. Mid-school math will be here next week. Um in all of our middle schools, actually coaching cycles around the implementation of mid-school math, the adoption, middle school math that you adopted last last year at this time. And um then again, the trial pilot, so those teachers that are brave risk takers and jump out ahead and do the trial pilot, they actually help all the other teachers that are kind of your colleague go to as to any challenges they might have or any suggestions they may have had to make the implementation process. Um shall I say run more smoothly? And so they're very much a part of especially our pilot teachers are very much a part of what professional learning we need to look at to come next. And then um we also, as part of the implementation, uh we have, we also have um a monitoring component that's put in place um so that we make sure that if there's any additional needed supports um that we can meet those needs during those first two implementation years. So we're not locked in. It's like we're very flexible, but we're very supported by the vendor and the teachers that have helped us in con- conducting the pilot program. And then uh phase five, that's the evaluation and you hear much about the evaluation um when we come forward with the data um that we have in our progress report, but it is in our responsibility is to um once we put the curriculum in place and it's been it's being used for instruction, we could closely monitor the resource and the instruction implementation to make sure that it's used the way the vendor designed it. Uh these are pretty sophisticated um resources that we provide and there are many components to it. We definitely want to make sure educators have the tools in the access to use them in the in the most efficient and effective way. Um we also use student achievement data. Um and then um we use, um as I mentioned in previous presentations, we have the jury process. So every June, teachers actually move uh submit air any part of the content essential documents, the resources, uh the interim assessments that they would like of the alike teacher content area to review um to make sure that there are adjustments made to it um that better meet what it is we're measuring for. And so those are the five phases from the helicopter view. There's obviously an enormous amount of work that goes underneath every single one of those. And that's why I strongly encourage and and we'll we'll make it work. So whatever works for you, we'll make it work and we'll get some dates out to you in case you want to join some of these um presentations to kind of see the interaction with the vendor and the teachers and so on and so forth. So um any additional questions? I won.
All right, uh any board questions? Yes.
I was wondering how you may incorporate student voice in the process of deciding the curriculum.
And that is um for instance, I've our team just went out for world language. So I'm going to use one that's most fresh in my memory. Okay. Uh because high school math, we have started and stopped that over two consecutive years. Um but we actually went out and met with the students in those current courses like in Spanish one and Spanish two. And we brought all the resources, we shared them with them, and then we had a a feedback form and then we just had conversation with them. And then when you come back and you figure, so you get all this data and how do you know which one will be chosen, right? Uh the student's voice weighs at twenty percent of the overall, the teacher's forty and then teaching and learning or district office, who have to make sure that everything aligns is forty uh percent. But um that's how we we actually go right out, we survey students, but we have this year been going right to the courses where the students of where they are taught. And it is one of the most rewarding components of this whole selection process. If you want to, you want to, it's amazing. It's amazing the insight they bring and how ecstatic they are. I really like this resource because I get right to it right away. It's like they are really engaged in this process. So kudos to you guys. Uh you you make us come alive.
Thank you. And it's really great that you guys get the student voice involved in that too, because we are the people who are going to be learning the curriculum.
Maybe we can get you to come to some some of the vendor presentations too. Oh, Angie, work on that.
Right, um yes, Brian.
Uh follow up with that. Does that happen at all levels or mainly at the high school level or do do we do that high school, middle school and elementary?
That's correct. We did the same thing with mid-school math. We actually write in the classroom, um especially in the pilot rooms because it's uh it's kind of difficult. Um to get because it's such a comprehensive, for instance, for mid-school math. So they were in the pilot room and they actually asked students for feedback as they were learning. And we have all of that data. And what the students provided is, you know, the we definitely ask them, are you comfortable with this way of learning? If you know, what do you, what do you like or dislike about it? And again, we tailor the survey in the interview questions based on the age of the student.
And could you just remind me, what's the average? And could you just remind me, what's the average uh cycle time for the curriculum like often are we looking at refreshing? And does it vary based on subject and area?
Yes, statistically, you're supposed to review your curriculum every five years, which we do. This is really where you the for uh five phases here is where we really dig in. And really, all aspects of CIA work, we dig into and uncover. Get feet forward from all stakeholders that work with it. It's it's a very good question um that we try to time when we believe the Department of Public Instruction will be releasing new. Standards, because if you don't want to jump out and do it all this work, when you are going to have to bring everybody back in the next year. Uh, and start all over at the curriculum unwrapping. So. And um, I believe it's in the progress report from our previous year, you'll see an eight-year cycle. That had all of the content areas and what year we were going to bring forward. And then a lot of things happened that get that off kilter. But we always want to stay in front of our priority pieces. But the team that'll be here uh next month to meet with you, they they'll be able to fill you in on every little nook and cranny. You'd want to know what's next, what time it's next. But our high school E L A is coming in February. And I I know we're interested, but our E L A eight K eight will be this time next year. We will be bringing a new resource forward for um middle school and elementary E L A adoption. And then we'll have all of our elementary, middle school and high school math adoptions completed. And also our our literacy resources completed. So those are very, those are heavy, heavy lifts. So that's quite an accomplishment and they're nice and tight. So that we'll really be able to follow that progression of learning.
And since you mentioned the um D P I timelines on that, have I assume that we've had. We've worked collaboratively with D P I on this when they're looking for examples and stuff being a large district on the same cycle. So we're kind of, I don't want to say influencing, but we're we're part of that discussion too, or no?
Well, that that does local control as to how you set that up, but I can tell you what we do do. We have teachers that volunteer to actually go in and review the standards. And are part of the standards uh writing and restructuring of the standards at the state level every year. Yeah, no problem.
Okay, anyone else? Right, thank you. Uh, that concludes the uh education section.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks, guys. All right, um, next on the agenda is uh operations. We're going to be joined by um Nancy, I'm sorry. Labissinair. Yeah, yeah, um, this this will be facilitated by Don Smith, but uh Vicky has some things to share.
Thanks, um, Lori Blaisley is take this work is leading for a brighter future. And I want to start by thanking the A T S N R team. We have Nancy here tonight. And then uh her teammates Chuck and Pete are joining us virtually. Thank you uh for the work that you put into this. This has been a year-long project that culminated in thousands of. Pages of documents that have all been uploaded into board docs for the community and the Board of Education to view. This is going to be some heavy work over the next few months. So this is the kickoff. And we're going to get a high overview, high-level overview tonight of the work that they've done. Nancy?
Nope, yep.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see here, and I just wanted, do I have permission to share screen?
Just about the microphone, whenever someone else speaks, your microphone will go off. So anytime you speak, you'll have to turn it back on. This one stays on all the time, but um, the rest, the rest you'll have to take turns.
No problem. All right, just bear with me as I get my technology straight here and get the right screen pulled up. Let's see here. Let's see, and there's one more. Every sharing thing has its own little tweaks that we have to get to. Okay, there we go. So. All right. And um, I think, let's see here. We should be good to go. All right, as I, as you mentioned, my name is Nancy Labissinair. I'm an architect with A T S R Architects, Engineers and Planners. And uh with me, I have Chuck Ho- Holden. Chuck, let you introduce yourself.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm here virtually. I hope you can hear me okay. Welcome from Snowy, Minnesota, and we're excited to be here tonight.
Uh, Pete Lacy was expected to be with us. Unfortunately, he's another architect from our office. He got COVID yesterday and we thought maybe he could do remote, but he's feeling worse and worse through the day. So you're going to have to deal with just the two of us, I'm afraid, and and listen to us talk a long time. So bear with us while we while we uh go through the report here. Alrighty.
Okay, I'll I'll start out. It as Vicky said and Nancy's been talking, we we've spent a lot of time with Green Bay Public Schools. And we've been very impressed with with your staff, with the amount of learning that's happening in your schools, with your actual facilities. Uh, it's just been a great experience and and we're going through what we call the gems process, which is gathering. A ton of information, which we've been doing for months, evaluate that information. Model that uh information, share it with the the upcoming task force. Solve the problems and then share the message. So we call that gems and we're about in the middle of that process. And now we're starting with the community engagement portion, which to me is the most exciting and and most worthwhile. As far as gathering input and finding out how the community fee actually feels about Green Bay Public Schools. And if their impression matches what ours and yours is. And like I said, there's been a lot of work. We uh had teams going to your sites. And we would start out with a pretty clean slate, and this is kind of how things would look at the end of the meetings. But met with your principals, met with your your building uh leaders and your teachers and your some of your students. And just to get a real good handle on your facilities with with experts that. Deal specifically with educational learning areas, others that dealt specifically with HVAC roofs, windows. Uh, all the mechanicals and uh and so we've got a pretty good feel now for uh all of your facilities.
So we.
I'm sorry.
You'll have to excuse us a little bit. We're not as smooth as we should be because Pete's normally in here. So we we're a little jerky now and again, I apologize for that. So uh before we kind of get into the results of the report, we want to spend a little time on future-ready learning environments. Because that's one of the pieces that we look at when we're doing the educational adequacy portion of the analysis. Because as you know very well, as educational um needs are changing. We're finding that the facilities, older facilities weren't necessarily designed for those and kind of looking for. What can we do to set up your facilities for the future to allow for that? So we're evaluating uh those items. So the the things that we're looking at here um that we really consider to be key principles are a variety of learning set uh settings. Connection and flexible spaces, uh identity and community, safety and security, and of course, a quality environment.
So starting out with variety of furniture, and this is Edison Martin Elementary School, showing that students are are all learning. And the same method that, you know, at least when I grew up. Uh, everyone's sitting at the classroom desk all the time. So these soft type furnitures, different types of. Settings for students in small groups has been very effective. Spaces for pullout for for one student to work on a project individually. And one-on-one, the teacher can can meet with a student in this example showing at Eisenhower. Just off of a hallway of making better use of those spaces. And collaborative spaces for students. Baird Elementary, we have several examples because obviously it's a newer school. A lot of these concepts have been incorporated, but showing uh collaborative space where students can get together. And they've got the technology and got the area to work. And places to present where we still need uh lecture, we need areas for students to put their devices. Uh, which is different and large group meeting spaces are still very important. Hands-on learning with um. Pull down uh again, access for technology and and uh just spaces to be able to work. And outdoor learning spaces are important. Again, Baird showing the courtyard. And we've got several facilities and schools we've worked with with students having the ability in science classes to go out. For example, and plant vegetables and harvest those vegetables, um that type of thing.
So the the second uh principle that we're looking at is really connection and flexible spaces. So you have an example here in Eisenhower Elementary um that this space can be configured in a lot of different ways for many usages. And that's really a valuable space to have in a in a facility. And it also extends to flexible furniture that can be moved around and reconfigured. Uh, and that, you know, people of different sizes can sit in different things and where you're comfortable. Just like if you want to hang out at the at the coffee shop or or wherever, not everyone picks the same furniture to be in. So uh flexible space also includes things like uh different times of types of doors and partitions that can be opened up. We found uh facilities who had this during COVID found it tremendously valuable um because it gave them the. The way to be able to partition as they needed to or open up when they needed to and and really allow that flexibility to work the way they needed to. And that creating visual connections, um so you can do passive supervision. It can be from the classroom, views outside, all of those kind of things to really be able to to allow different, those different groupings. And still maintain your security and your supervision and the thing that you need to have. And this is just an example of that, some of that happening outside of the classroom with windows into the classroom. So the teacher has that passive supervision. And the connection to the outdoors visually is important from the standpoint even of just natural light. All the studies you've probably heard about natural light being so good for kids. And um increasing actually scores for test scores and those kind of things when you have natural light being so important. And that opportunity to even bring it outside and do classwork um outside if you can.
Okay, identity and and community, we're uh welcoming admit uh entry points to schools who think are important. Not just for the community, but for the students, just their their sense of belonging and and. How they feel about their school, it really sets the tone. Reinforce school community is an example, Burnsville, Minnesota, but we've got several also in Green Bay. Where we're just again, student pride. And here's one at Edison Middle School. Good example of of putting those ideas, those good concepts in front of students on a regular basis. And celebrating student work, being able to put uh student having access points or or hallways. And locations where you can exhibit artwork and and you can build that pride that the students have. And and parents can have access to see it. And learning on display, um, you know, making use of areas under stairways for students to to learn. And using the building as a teaching tool is interesting concept, and we've seen more and more of this. Again, using um, you know, measuring points or or different conceptual ideas put on walls. And community spaces, we all know are important. Again, uh example at Baird. Just showing that the multiple uses of areas um and will be actually uh convening. Our first task force meeting at Baird in the space and making use of it for that purpose. But I I know that over the years, you've already used this for several different events. Uh, community space at Martin Elementary School, just showing how again, the soft furniture can be used in areas that previously. You know, haven't been, maybe were underutilized just to have more pullout areas and areas for students.
The fourth uh principle relates to safety and security. So we're also probably familiar with secure entries. And how important those are, and you guys have done a a pretty good amount of work in in that regard. But really, it's it's more than that. It also relates to things like building zoning. Now, in a new building, we're able to um situate the area so that you can keep your public on one side. And your classroom area on the other side and and have zoning between those two. But it's also a part um involves create, if you can, creating layers of zoning. So that not all the security has to happen at the classroom door. If you can have it in multiple locations, then that allows you to do more of what we've been talking about with these other visual passive supervision. And things like that and and still be able to manage and balance those learning needs with the security needs. So you don't have to close up your classroom so tight if you're able to do uh zoning in other areas. And that includes things like even elementary school restrooms, for instance, so that so that the teacher can see the kids washing their hands. And there's not shenanigans going on in the back way when they're washing hands, right? Exterior security, of course, is important um when you have events at a high school or at any time really to control your traffic. And um where people are entering and exiting, uh how the circulation works. Is there enough in the right places when you have whole groups of people coming for an event at a stadium? Is there safe exiting? All of those kind of things are important. So for for quality environments, that's uh that's Chuck. Sorry, Chuck.
Okay, uh, the the actual building structure, the indoor environment. Natural light in this example, lighting, acoustics, air quality are all important. Technology is is, you know, growing. We all know this on a on a daily basis. So incorporating that into learning areas for the students. And energy efficient and sustainable uh materials, uh windows that are more efficient than they were. When they were designed, maybe in the fifties, uh HVAC systems that are that are very efficient. ADA accessibility, not just because you have to by federal mandate, but because it's the right thing to do. And you, I know you've got parent groups interested in this type of thing and fundraising and but that's something we need to keep in. In the forefront at all times too is accessibility. So our facility study report, I think I keep going here now, so you don't.
Let's see, let me talk a little bit about this piece and then then. And then uh then we'll have Chuck jump back in here. So the the pieces that you just saw there, those five sections then get, um, these are just in a snapshot of one part of the scorecard. Then that we put together that looks at those for all the different schools. So for the whole analysis, we're we're basically doing a stoplight um type of of uh nomenclature. So you'll see the red as needs most improvement, um, yellow is usually fair and green is good. So easy to understand visually. And so this is just a shot from the middle high school and other um areas. And um, you know, gets you a sense even visually of of how these are working. And then there's an average score across the bottom. Let's see, and the um, as you can see there, there's the the spaces and then it gives you an overall. Um, as we look at each building, each one has a the scorecard with a stoplight that shows you in each category. Which one of those things there are. And then this is a um, we have a lot of different tables that throughout the report that shows you. That analyze the data in different ways to help you understand it. So um, this is just an example of um the kind of the range that we're seeing across. For the educational adequacy score and it's different colors for different types of building. Um, for the educational adequacy score and it's different colors for different types of building. And then let's see. This one Chuck, I believe i- this is related to capacity, so I'm gonna let Chuck talk about this a little bit.
Yeah, and actually I could spend uh, the rest of the night talking just about this one slide. It, it's complex. There's a lot of data here. I'm not gonna go through it all, but uh, suffice it to say that would, that. Uh, in Green Bay, in Green Bay schools, like many school districts, you've got excess capacity and we spent a lot of time looking at. Uh, maximum capacity of a building which you don't wanna function at it. It can be even de- detrimental for moving. Uh, in hallways for core areas, for cafeteria, for buses. Uh, so maximum capacity is number on the far left. Ideal capacity for, for our purposes, we assume ninety percent maximum capacity. Um, and then we, we indicate current enrollment in all the school seats to ideal capacity, just, just. Uh, moving that bar to an individual basis. Uh, current enrollment to ideal capacity comparisons and what the percentage is. Uh, seats to maximum capacity. Um, maximum enrollment, seats to ideal capacity at maximum enrollment. We go through all of this and then go out ten years to projected numbers in twenty twenty-three. But here's a little bit clear, uh, you know, more close-up view of that and, and the bottom line is, um. If you filled your schools to capacity, again, not recommended, but there's almost seven thousand additional seats at this point. Um, and, and going out to another ten years if projections stay as they are, we all know there's a lot of factors that can play into that. Um, but it could be up to ninety-four. Uh, hundred extra seats. Now going to ideal capacity. Or at least our impression of ideal capacity, right now we're at forty-four, forty. Additional seats and that can grow up to almost seven thousand in ten years. So we're at a point and this will be something that we, that we talk a, a great deal about with the task force. Um, where you've got, you've got. You're investing money in space that you don't need and it's time to take a good look at. Where you can better utilize that space. Uh, make improvements to spaces and then potential uh, cut back on some of these spaces. So. It's a, it's a shot at that, there's a, there's a lot that goes into this and there's a lot of caveats to this because. Capacity in buildings can be affected by many things, as, as you all are aware. Special education programming is just one, uh, where, where the, the numbers instead of being. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six to one in a typical classroom could be eight to one. So there are a lot of factors that play into this and a lot of discussion has to happen when you look at building capacities. And this is uh, another view of capacity and then it extends it to the actual physical site. And most of your locations, if you look at that red column. As Nancy indicated, if you're thinking stop signs, there's a big. Uh, literally a red flag there and that is not a true picture because you've got collaboration with the city. And you've got so many sites that are sharing uh, city park space, but your actual. School-owned property uh, compared to the recommended. Uh, acreage is, is under capacity. So it, uh, and then there's a look on the yellow column of the square feet per student where. Uh, our recommendation is about two hundred and fifty square feet per student. And in a lot of cases, you're under that. Um, in some cases you're over that, but in, in a lot of schools you're under that and. Uh, a good example of how that can happen is you've got. As, as most or many school districts do, especially with older facilities, you've got shared cafeteria and. Um, gym space. And that is greatly impacting this, the square footage per student. So that can skew that, that view. It's not strictly talking about a conventional classroom. Uh, so our calculated ideal capacity can vary from the districts or it does vary from the districts. Maximum projected enrollment. Uh, is seventy-six percent of ideal capacity on average. So we are under utilizing, in our opinion, our building space enrollment is projected to decline. And with declining birth dates, it's going to continue and that is a national trend. It's not just happening in. In Green Bay, Wisconsin. And in ten years, enrollment, uh, if, if things play out the way they, they currently are projected. Would be sixty-seven percent of ideal capacity. And uh, just as, you know, we've got several graphs basically showing the same thing and here's a, here's a breakdown on that. Percentage showing you uh, seventy-two percent average for all schools and then. Um. Seventy percent elementary, middle school average and just kind of showing you how that breaks down across the buildings. And spare seats at maximum enrollment. And square footage per student and that's what we, we mentioned again that. Um. That recommended square footage is two hundred and fifty square feet and, and uh, this is how that breaks down across the schools.
So we're gonna show an example now if, as you dig into report of what you would see for one particular building and kinda how. Briefly how to read that. So each on the educational adequacy side, and I should say there's four volumes to this whole thing. Um, we've got a summary, um, volume. And, and that also has the educational adequacy piece. There's an, there's an appendix to that section that has. Many interviews and, and surveys and all of the background work and the standards and all the background work that's been done with educational adequacy. And, and then on the facility side, there's a summary volume and then there's so many. With forty-two buildings, there's so much data that we had to split it into um, the educational or excuse me, the elementary and um. Elementary buildings in one and um, the. High school, middle school and other type buildings in the other one. And then there's a, another volume, a fourth volume on the. Educate facilities assessment side, that's that appendix, which is the standards, the replacement standards, the interviews that we held. So just, just a huge ton of data here to look at. So this is an example on the educational adequacy side. And so we give you a brief summary of, of what we found per building um, in a, um, in a. Written form and then this is an example of the site um, for one building. And again, there's that stoplight. Um, that you're seeing there with, as you know, site, you got small, a lot of small sites, so you'll see a lot of red for the, um, for the site size. Um, and sometimes traffic flow can be a little tricky in, in your sites and as you probably are well aware of. Um, and so we're identifying areas of heavy traffic, where the entries are, where busing is. Um, and then the keynotes at the bottom would identify particular issues to, issues to that site. Um, this is an example of, um, this is not from your district, but just an example of a building, um. That shows how this educational adequacy um, diagram really takes all of this information that we have and puts it in visual form. So you have the same, as you see on the left-hand side, there are those, those same, uh. Things that we just talked about for future-ready learning environments, kind of the scorecard for those. And then we also have um, the adequacy as far as size and square footage. So Wisconsin doesn't have. Exact um, recommended sizes for, for educational spaces. And so because of that, we use Minnesota's as a reference point. Now, I should say to that, that just because something is. Um, uh, is not the same thing as the app, doesn't meet that. Um, capacity or isn't the same size as the required size, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's bad. It just may mean that you have less kids that fit in there and therefore it works fine. So it may be working fine for you, it's just that it's happens to be under the standards and we have to have something to use as a baseline. So. So keep that in mind as you're, as you're reading through the report. Um, and since as you know, you're, you're under capacity right now. That's partially the reason why this is still working pretty well for you because even though some of these spaces might be small, you've got less kids in them. So, um, so you can, so we are, we are identifying the types of spaces there as you see down in the, the. Kind of the rainbow of colors working their way down, um, things that are. Uh, rooms that are undersized relative to standards have the red box around them and the slash through them. So those are the spaces that are undersized and then we have again, specific keynotes to related to. Particular issues within the building that you can, that can be um, read. And then when you get to high schools and middle schools, of course, you have a whole nother piece, which is utilization. So utilization. Um, because you have kids moving around all the time and I think you guys are probably pretty familiar with that whole aspect of it and, and. Um, how well those spaces are being used per period as the kids are moving around. So ideally you wanna be in that eighty-five percent range usually is what we, we are looking for. Um, and so what this is doing is looking at utilization. So this is just a close-up of. In, at the high schools and middle schools, there's these extra little boxes floating for each individual space. And so this is giving in more detail what the function is versus orange is just classrooms, right? But this is giving you, okay, this is math. Right? That kind of thing. Um, and it tells you for that particular classroom, what the util- classroom, what the utilization rate is. So this one's happens to be a hundred, which is not so good. We don't wanna be there. Um, so that's red. Um, if it's good utilization, we're about kind of in the range we wanna be, it's green. In, in this case, we're actually using yellow as an underutilization. So. This room happens to be down all the way at forty-nine percent underutilized so that it's yellow, kind of a you-hoo, we're, we're underutilized there. So then we get to the facility assessment side. So that's all been the educational adequacy half. We had one whole team doing that. We had another whole team doing the facility assessment side for the physical condition of the buildings. So just a few notes before we get into the details on that. So the assessment is capturing a point in time, which was starting about last January or so into June. And so of course, last summer, this past summer, you did some work on the buildings, right? Well, we can't. Always be picking up all of those pieces, we'd never be done. You guys would get deathly sick of us. So. So it's at that moment of time and reflects that moment in time. It does not necessarily acknowledge the November twenty-two referendum. Items, um, especially because many of those items are actually improvements that are not necessarily, you know, when we see the condition of. I don't know, the, the facilities at West, the first, I didn't automatically put in there, I'm gonna give you a whole new stadium, right? That wasn't. That's a decision that was made beyond the scope of, of what we were doing here. So they're not, so it's, it's of its moment in time and reflects those. And of course, when this is done, the, we didn't know whether the referendum would pass or not. So. It, you know, it's that picture at that time. Um, costs or project costs, they are conservative, they are, so they are including construction costs. Plus um, fees and permits and all of those other things, soil borings, all those things that it goes in to, to make a project. Um, and they allow for whether it's a small project or a large project, we wanna cover you basically. So. If you're gonna do a really big project, well, there's some economies of scale there, but. We can't guarantee you're always gonna do that. So we're trying to take care of you with the cost here basically. Um, costs are set to March twenty-two, um, which is right in there when we were starting to get data in. Um, and so when we start uh, budgeting options as we go forward with the task force here. Those costs will be inflated first from March twenty-two to present. And that will be done with something called the ENR BCI, which is Engineering News Record Building Construction Index. It's an index of construction costs in various regions that's been done for years and years. That we keep track of all the time and it'll, and it has these index numbers that allow us to take one, March twenty-two. And take today and figure out what the exact inflation should be, not a guess. Oh, it's been this, well, and you know, we all know inflation's been a little crazy lately, right? So we need to know the real number to get us from. Here to there. And then from there forward, we will, we will inflate to a future bid date. So you need to go to that point. And of course, we're gonna need to have some discussions about, well, what number do we use, right? For future inflation, it's a little tricky right now. Um, so that's part of what we'll, we'll go through to try to decide. What the comfort level is about what that inflation number should be as we move forward. So just a quick note about MacArthur Elementary before we start. So. And this is maybe not a surprise to some of you who are familiar with the building. Uh, we are recommending that MacArthur not be used for student use anymore, that it be acknowledged. I demolished, excuse me. Um, there are several conditions in the building that are very, very difficult to correct. Um, you have some foundation settlement occurring there from some soils. Uh, conditions going on, especially in the corner of the gym, the one picture on the one side there on the right. Um, you can, there's a good inch and a half of settlement in the corner of one of the bathrooms there. Um, it's just crazy. Um, the amount of settlement that's going on in that building. You also have, the, the picture on the left is. Um, down into a sump where there's running water, you have underground. Um, water table there that's moving all the time. And if the sump pump and, and you have of course, primary and a secondary sump pump. You guys have done everything you can do there, um, to take care of things. Um, but if back in the past when there wasn't a secondary sump pump. If the primary went out, then you're flooding your boiler room and your electrical equipment, not so great. So um, there's, there's just some conditions there and, and other even with the, the layout of the building. That you have up these little wedge shape, shaped classrooms um, that are not ideal for learning, learning because there's no closure, they're not, they're too small. Walls don't go up to structure, there's a lot of things going on there. And so for that reason. We really feel that the best and the most appropriate thing there is to demolish that building. And so because of that, we are including the building demolition cost from foundation up um, into the. Into the assessment, not necessarily whole site because we don't know what you're gonna do with the site, but the building itself. Okay, so that's MacArthur, so that's why you'll go, well, why isn't that number very big? Well, because it's just, it's just the building demolition. That's why. And cause it's pretty difficult to quantify cost-wise, how would you address these issues when they're not really fixable? Okay, so I mentioned the volumes over here, I jumped ahead of myself, heels out, here's all the volumes, the summaries. The early learning, elementary, uh, middle school, high school, other, and then we have the appendices. So this is an example, uh, again, on the facility side of tank. Um, and here we are showing some, we are including some photos of deficiencies. Um, to be able to help people better understand those, uh, and, and in with the summary. And uh, let's see, well, and then we also, and this goes through all the disciplines and says what are the, what are the issues and deficiencies? With architectural, mechanical, electrical, working all the way through there. So this, uh, we have done something that most firms typically don't do on the facility assessment side. Um, we have taken the information from our. Big old nasty spreadsheets that aren't so fun for everybody to be able to read and understand and get a grasp on. And we've put that information in graphic form so that this might be easier for you to get a handle on really what that. What's going on in a particular building. And again, this isn't your district, this is a different school, but um, it's the same stoplight. Thing happening here where the, the most urgent items are red, um, medium priority is yellow. Low priority is green. And so, um. We've got notes that are general to the building and then we have specific keynotes for items. And um, you may see these combination kind of things like FE one, which is furnish. Um, excuse me, finishes and equipment. Um, and the reason we do that is because when you have cabinetry or casework, as we wanna use the nomenclature, all this. All these jargon things we like to throw at you for, forgive me for the jargon. Um, the uh, when we have. Casework that needs to be replaced, then it affects a lot of other things. It, it can affect your floors and your paint on the walls and all those things. So we do a combination number that gets you all those things in one. Um, in one fell swoop. But we feel that it's important, if you're going to go and replace casework. To look at it from the standpoint of what is the right thing for future-ready learning and not ne- necessarily by rote. Just put in the same stuff that was there before. Cause if it's there from the fifties or the thirties, that not, might not necessarily meet the same learning modalities that you wanna have now. So if you're going to do it, it's an opportunity to say, should we be doing something different? And then when you do something different, you're going to affect other things. So um so there that
Nancy, can we get a question quick?
It's not a question. I just want to uh tell anyone who's watching this presentation that they won't see any floor plans from our school district up here for security reasons. So if they're searching for them, they're not there. They've been redacted uh for uh because it's part of our security plan. Thanks.
This one, did I do the wrong thing? Is this supposed to be off? All right, sorry. I'll figure it out by the end. Okay, so so this is an example of of one of them. And you know, you'll see things in the red, of course, highlighted ones are the the biggest issues. So in in this particular building, they didn't have an elevator. Well, that's kind of a big deal. Right? So that one's red. Uh so and we do the same thing with with uh mechanical and electrical highlighting biggest issues. So again, it's a way to get your arms around all these mountains of data. We also show building age um so that you get a handle. And of course, building age, you know, really can have an impact on how much maintenance you're doing on a regular basis, how many issues you may ongoing issues you may continue to have. So this is an example of the spreadsheet, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. Um if anyone has questions, you know, and wants to dig into some of this stuff, we're happy to answer questions. Um but it's basically getting all that information in, and it's the same idea that we've got. The red is that highest priority. Um yellow is medium, green is low. Um one note about the low priority items, excuse me. And when you're seeing those numbers, um the district asked that um certain of the high um um high maintenance cost items like roofs and mechanical and turf and those kind of things be tracked out for thirty years. So those items that are okay now, but if, you know, after that um ten year timeframe, those are in the green. So those items, that dollar amount gets pretty inflated because you're looking out thirty years. And for turf, for instance, that has to be replaced every twelve, thirteen years or so, it's in here twice. So the don't get freaked out by the not by the low priority number, I guess, is what I'm saying, because there's a lot of those long term items in there. So we have summaries then that that go through again, high priority, medium, low um for each building. This is just a clip of that. And so this is the kind of the big reveal total, I guess you could say. So um that high priority items, you're in the, you know, sixty-nine million. And again, remember, this is March twenty-two numbers. Would have to get inflated inflated, but um so you're in that sixty-nine million of high priority items and um that one ninety um six or so of of medium priority. So the two of them together, that's where you get that almost well, hundred fifty-four-ish, hundred fifty-five-ish, or two hundred fifty-four-ish, fifty-five-ish of medium and high priority together. Um now what we typically find for a lot of districts, um well, and it just varies, of course, on what the funding sources are and what, you know, it just because this number is sitting in here doesn't mean that all of this is going to go into a referendum, obviously, because you have long term facilities, maintenance money, and you have capital money, and you have all sorts of pots of money that you are using over time. And this is meant to be a planning tool to help you manage all the issues and identify them and be able to work with them over time. So we really find that for most districts, it depend, well, it depends on how many of the issues that they have, but um you may not get to all the medium priority items right away, because sometimes the dollar amounts just too big, right? And there's the other piece of this is that this does not necessarily um get to remodeling or additions that would address anything on that educational adequacy side. So things we would do for future ready learning or to add that cafeteria or gym that's missing all of those kind of, that money's not in here. So and because and it's not in here because that comes next, basically, right? As you start moving forward to figure out what you might want to look at doing to particular buildings. So that's the other thing to keep in mind. This is not all the money. There's other there's other things that need to be addressed to get at some of those educational adequacy issues. Okay, and this is just, this is just again, another way of looking at it. So you can see the um elementary school, high school, middle school, and as you would expect, high schools are much more square footage. They're bigger, even though you only have four of them. There's a lot of square footage there. So as far as dollar amounts, they're actually not that far off all of the elementaries combined. And so and and it's you see high and and for the medium priority, that is, and then for the high priority, high priority stuff, you got more going on at the elementary level than than you do at the other ones. So again, just another way of looking at the information. We also have breakdowns by type of um of area or um component. So this is just an example of of um site and you start to see roofs. So roofs are, as you can see there, a large percentage, because no surprise, you just had two bids. They're not cheap, right? So so when you have a big roof area to do, of course, that has a big impact on on the numbers. And so you'll see that um in there as it moves forward. So this is another way to look at that data again, high and medium priority as it works its way across that some of the big hitters that you'll see when we get into more. So this is works, works its way across the type of schools with each individual school. Um this starts to break down between exterior envelope, um interior site and systems. So systems is also a big hitter, as you know, when you replace, when you do mechanical upgrades, that's a big, that's a big hitter, right? And so, for example, um you'll see Kennedy is that middle one, the big red one shooting up there. That's because you need full mechanical upgrades over at Kennedy. And so that's why that number is high. Um Sullivan is another one that needs new windows and and needs mechanical, so that one shoots up. So those are, those are kind of things that that show up in the in the verticals. So there's the example of Kennedy that I got ahead of myself. So this is again, just a a different way to look at the information, shifting it around. So the systems is the dark pink. Um interiors, the light pink envelope is the um is the dark, and you got a little bit of sight there. We think envelope's pretty important. As you would expect, if you're going to maintain your building, you don't want it to fall apart from the outside in. So that's something that to um that we think that, you know, we tend to look at those as a higher priority if we see issues. And there's just an example of those again. So this one is a different one altogether. All the other things you were looking at were priority of of um so we we are looking at both condition and priority because just because something is maybe in poor condition, it may not necessarily be a high priority for you to replace, right? And the um when we met with the facility staff, they told us to go ahead and if if it's just flooring uh by itself, to automatically listed it as low priority, because you guys have your own flooring replacement system that you're that you're doing on an ongoing basis. So um this one actually is looking just at physical condition, how we're rating condition. And if um in each line across here up in the upper portion, um if that is over five percent of the replacement cost of the building, it goes red. When you get to the bottom, down that bottom hole piece, if it's over fifty percent of the replacement cost of the building, it goes red. Now those are actually a little orangy red. They look red, red. It's really hard to get them, the color to behave itself. Uh none of them are actually fifty. There are the the worst one, I think, is mid forties uh relative to replacement cost of building, but it gives you a sense because all these other things are like, it's just this dollar amount, right? But this just sort of tells you, even if you have a little building, you have a smaller amount of work, it can be a big impact on a small building, and you got a lot of smaller elementaries. So it's helpful to understand relative to replacement cost of the whole building. And we use, of course, a you know, a a cost per square foot, that's an average. You got, it depends on the size of the school, right? Because if you're building a teeny tiny little elementary, that's going to cost more per square foot than if you're building a bigger, more efficient elementary school. So it it's, you don't need to get too caught up in the individual numbers exactly and go, oh, this is thirty-six and this is thirty. Just, you know, it's really more about general feel of it and kind of, okay, this one's you know, we got a lot of work to do here relative to the replacement cost versus this one's not so bad. So it's just kind of an overall different way to look at it. And so here's a, here's a close up of that. So um let's see. Am I wanting to? Oh, let me do that. No, it won't. I have a click to join audio that won't go away here. Ah, I shouldn't have done that. Shoot, bear with me. I messed it up. I was trying to get so I could read something and I messed it up. Okay, so I'm there and then I gotta go back to here. Oh, and then, of course, it won't let me do that. Okay, bear with me, guys. Sorry about that.
It's okay. We've all been there.
Yes. PowerPoint, ain't it great? Okay. Let's see. Table, 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 table. More, more, we're getting there. Getting there, close, close. Okay, there we are. I'm not moving. Um let's see. So and I can't remember what that building is because it's covered up. The one that's right at the top, I can't read it. The third one over Beaumont. Yeah, so for example, um and let's see, can I read it in red? Well, so the 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 number that's in the red is the percentage of rebuilding replacement. And then below that is the actual total in dollar in millions. So four point seven million is what is um is what's in there uh for that actual uh cost that it's comparing to. Okay. So then we get to combined scores. So again, we got this mountain of data, right? We got a mountain of facility data. We got a mountain of of educational adequacy data. And we wanted to say, how can we take all of this and make it manageable for you to be able to to get a handle on a building as a whole? And so we've we've done a combined score that takes the education adequacy side, takes the takes both the condition and the priority scores, puts all of them in there to get a facility and educational adequacy score. And this just goes through a few of the piece of it. So um we have the educational adequacy piece that's sitting in here and also talks about year of construction and the unweighted average building age, which can be informative. Now, this isn't necessarily taking a weighted average that is taking, you know, this pieces. The thirty-nine piece is only this big and whatever. It's just unweighted average. Excuse me. Um and then we also are getting the the capacity enrollment, um kind of the 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 highlights, basically, uh on that uh kind of the data piece that you're seeing in there. And then uh the piece on the left is getting back to, again, your some some of those specific costs by scope. Um both by priority and and then you also see the orange and blue there is the version by condition. So you have, everything is just one, you get a scorecard sheet for each building that gives you all the data um in one place. Uh in the middle, we have those educational adequacy scores um for for that building. And then we go to, so here's where your summary is basically of all these things that we're we're adding together to get that one combined score. Let's see, uh is that the one? Okay. And one note about this, of course, obviously, just because one is one point above or the other, doesn't mean that that building is you know, worse than this building. There's a lot of pieces that are coming into here, and there's a lot of factors that that are kind of going back and forth. Some are high in one, others are high in the other. So of course, it's not a perfect system, but it's a it's a a means to get some kind of a get our arms around this in a in some kind of a fashion. So then the other thing um that we've done here is we we've put it on maps for you so that you can see uh which buildings have a combined score above seventy-five. And again, yellow is that fifty to seventy-five, a score below fifty uh is um is in red. So you can start to see where in the district are the buildings that have the lowest combined scores. Okay, so that was a whole bunch of the of information. And and I should say, Josh, can you tell them where they access detail if you want to dig into more?
Yeah, I know a lot of those slides were probably hard to see, but those are grabbed from the actual report itself, which exists in PDF out on board docs, um board members. If you would like an unredacted version, um as Laura mentioned, the um the floor plans are redacted in the ones that are posted publicly for um for school safety reasons. So if you would like an unredacted copy with the floor plans, please let me know and I can get you a copy. Yeah, that's where to find it.
Yeah, I'll jump back in. This is Chuck again. Thank you, Nancy. Uh there'll be a test on all this tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. That you just, you know, you're essentially bored. You're running the equivalent of a a fairly large city in your facility. Uh Josh, I don't know, Nancy, maybe you know the exact square footage. I'm guessing it's you know, six million square feet or something, or you're dealing with four million. Um it it's a huge, I mean, you have a huge amount of facilities and a huge amount of things that have to be taken into consideration. So um questions uh before we talk about next steps on any aspect of this. I know it's overwhelming.
Ryan?
Uh the final summaries that you had on the last two slides, do you know which volume those are?
The one that has the guy, yeah. Okay, I'll figure this out eventually. I'm sorry. Uh that all is in volume one. All the summaries are in volume one. Make it easy. So for the combined.
Andrew, you have a question?
Thank you. Um I'm just looking at the map here, specifically the um elementary school map in one A with uh some with the color coding and um um it's a good map. I just want to make sure I'm looking at what I'm what I'm reading correctly. So for example, in towards, I'm looking at Lincoln and um Elmore. So that's saying that there's a capacity and that's your recommended capacity, the ninety percent level, or is that the max? I am on that map.
So the capacity
I keep wanting to hit the wrong button. All right, sorry. Um in this case, this is maximum capacity. This is not ideal capacity, which ideal is dropping that ninety percent. Um it's our calculation of maximum capacity, and even that can vary a little bit from yours as far as how you calculate it. And Josh, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, and it it kind of came up um a little bit before. We we've got first of all, some smaller classrooms, right? So when they were going through and calculating their max capacity, they're looking at the board policy for class size, multiplying it times the number of classrooms. Well, for example, in Da Vinci, Tammy's got a couple of classrooms that can only fit fourteen kids. And you know, there are a lot of situations like that out there. So that's one reason why you will see capacities differ from what the district has calculated in the past. Then also, we've got some specialized programming. Think about our AGR schools where we've made a conscious decision to staff below the um the actual board policy in those schools. You know, to make use of those grant funds um and to help those students. And the same is true at Head Start. In that case, they're federally capped um by the number of students they can have in a classroom, which is below our um below our board policy. So that's that's one thing to be careful about um a little bit with regard to maximum capacity. Um it it's um yeah, I just, I guess I just wanted to say that.
I'm going to get it this time. Okay, so even um you like when we're counting class, we're not counting any rooms that you that are used for special ed or any other special programs as a typical classroom when we're counting standard capacity. And of course, that changes every year, right? Which ones that they are using. And of course, we did it based on last year, and this year it changes again. So you know, that's that's none of these numbers are going to be right on. Right on because there's a lot of variables that are happening in the field as we're looking at them and, you know, related to specific programs. And as we move forward doing planning, that's why we want to keep for sure under that ninety percent. You know, and we're, when we're looking at it because we, we need to allow some flex in there to make sure that you're taken care of.
Andrew.
So, given that there are unique features here, especially AGR that are. Not accounted for the numbers on this map necessarily. Well, simply multiplying by twenty-five would make, seems like it would make sense for. Uh, step, step one, um, why wouldn't we go through? And a, and use a capacity more in line, whether it's a max capacity or whatever. We're not going to put twenty-five kids in a classroom in an AGR. In an AGR classroom because of the grants. So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't that have just been modified before it was presented here? Because it's, makes it look like there's more extra spaces than there ever would be.
I, I think part of this gets back to programs change all the time and where buildings might be. AGR buildings might be one year and that may change over time. And especially if you start to look at. At how buildings may be repurposed or, or whatever, that may change. So we're trying to get a handle on. The physical building and not so much tie ourselves to the specific programming at the time. And so that, and as we move forward here, however, that will definitely come into more effect as you start to make sure that you. Have enough of them per se, right? That are, that meet that requirement, but it might not. It may or may not be in the same building that it is now. So we're trying to. It's that tricky balance that we have to keep between the physical building that you've got to work with. And what you're putting in it where, right? And, and as we look at that moving forward. We have to keep those things in mind, but when we're evaluating. If we, if we made that adjustment, we wouldn't be, be um adequately representing the physicality of the physical spaces of the building. Does that, does that make sense?
Okay, that's sure. That's fair because a building could have. Perhaps could hypothetically have grade levels included that are not. A, a different configuration of grade levels and AGR is only certain grade levels. So thank you for that. I understand that. And then um. Lincoln and Elmore have exactly the same set of numbers. I'm assuming that must have been a, a typo. They're not the same size at all. But they both have three fifty, one thirty-nine and two eleven on the map. So I think one of them just got, I think one of them just got.
Oops, I did, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more questions? James?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding the financials correctly. So you have a line item that's priorities one and two. And then you have them broken out, right? And so I'm making an assumption based on the presentation tonight that one and two are tracked ten years. Right? So if we're thinking about the pots of money from which we're gonna draw to pay off the two hundred and fifty. Million or as the recommendations come out of the task force. But um, the priority threes, I think what you said was they track thirty years. But some of that spend might be recommended in the first ten. Is that an appropriate assumption?
I keep hitting the wrong one. All right. So uh, the low priority items. Um, are typically even for items that are not mechanical or electrical. It, it's still recommended that those are um done in, in later years if they're low priority. So, so the, the high priority is years like one through three. Um, medium priority is, well, three to, yeah, well, I should clarify. One to three. Uh, one, two, either that first few years basically for high priority. And then you kind of get in that three to five year range um for medium. And then it's, yeah, I take it back. I have, I have to get this all straight in my head again. I apologize. And then once you're out like five to ten. That's when you get that lower priority stuff that's not mechanical or roofs or those kind of things, like the five to ten year. That's some of that's lower priority. So you're correct. There's some of those items that are in the green, but they're farther out in time. For your ten-year work. And what we've talked about with, with um, the facilities group is. Having a, a sit down to, because this is of course our interpretation, right? Based on what we know about your buildings and what we found. Your facility staff has, of course, in-depth knowledge of all these buildings. So there may be things that they feel um they want pushed to higher priority because they know, oh, I got an ongoing off and on thing. It may have been fine when you were there, but I know that this does this all the time, right? And we can't necessarily, we did a lot of surveys and looked for those things, but we can't find every, you know, unearthed every little pebble. So there may be, um, there may be some situations where they want to upgrade or downgrade something and we're gonna work with them. Moving forward to help use the tool and, and be able to, you know, so the numbers will probably change over time as your facility staff says. Uh, you know what? This is, this is gonna be okay for longer term. We can move this to low, but this has got to be pulled up, that kind of thing.
Okay, I appreciate that. And oh, I think Josh and Andrew both kind of indicated that. Looking at the report, there are a few discrepancies. The reasons why the discrepancies um really doesn't matter. As long as, is there a process for, as this is now public? And people start interrogating the document and, and finding other things, right? Yeah, well, well, it's not about being perfect, but also understanding what your intent is. Um, what is there going to be a process for additional data validation? Because ultimately, especially around populations, you know, you're, when you're in utilization, those are going to be really key data points. Upon which we're gonna base decisions. So have we envisioned a way for. Whether it be facility administration or whatever, building administrators to go in and. You know, basically take their sheets and say, yeah, I, I, I buy in. This is close enough where it represents the building.
So on the, the educational si- um stan- adequacy standpoint, they have done that for this past year. The principals have gone through. And each of them looked at their, their buildings and we've done those tweaks to, to accommodate that on a per building basis. On the educational adequacy side. Um, on the facility assessment side. Um, we got input from each um head custodian at every building to find out what their issues were. And so we feel pretty good that we've got their items covered in here. Um. I guess the tricky part of this is going to be again, that sort of concept of this is a point in time, a picture, right? And, and, and if we keep, at some point, you kind of have to say. You know, we're, we're working with the data that we have and, and we're not going to, and we're going to allow enough flexibility moving forward. So that it accommodates smaller visions that are gonna have to happen because we're never gonna get it down completely perfect to every.
Oh, sorry, I just catch up. Completely agree. When I look at the report and see room utilization, facility utilization. And all of the calculations right there with you. A, as long as that um, the building administrator looks at the population. And you know, just some key data points that they know and give you the flexibility on all the calculations. But just to make sure, because I get that there is a data collection process. Now, that's a ton of data. Uh, if there's just a validation process to make sure that as. Accurate information, baseline information as possible goes into the process.
And the principals have done that for, for their each individual buildings for, for those pieces.
As part of collection or validation could afterwards? Okay, thank you.
And dang, the previous data was of course a year ago when we first did it. So this, this few months ago, I guess, a couple of months ago. Is when we did that, that validation on the, with the principals on the adequacy side. Even more current uh last week or the week prior, we brought the principals into review as well.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna bring that up. We had them in it, in, on Tuesday. Um, we went through this presentation with them. Gave them access to the raw files with the floor plan so that they could check it out. And actually, that's why. Um, Tammy Van Dyke in, at uh Da Vinci sprung to mind when I was talking about capacity. Right? Because they have a very specialized thing going on there and they've got a waiting list and they are full. The way that they're looking at buildings as. Things that you cram people into is, is a little bit different than the way, you know, Tammy looks at, at her building. So I don't, I want, I want to make sure we don't get hung up on the differences in capacities listed. Here, we need, we need to make sure that um, that the building can handle what we intend to go on inside of it. Whereas their study of the buildings, their structures don't necessarily take into account those, those programmatic aspects. Within a building.
Brian?
And this is for you, Josh. Um, the enrollment numbers, I assume correlates to the um presentation we had earlier. This year as far as our enrollment predictions. Correct?
They were up to, yeah, the, the latest capacity and stuff was updated from latest enrollment or, or the latest demographic information that you just sent.
Yep. Andrew?
So. So just, just to be clear, since there's a lot of information coming out here, um, I guess this goes to Josh. There will absolutely be, uh, as long as there's still AGR, there absolutely will be. Elementary classrooms that will be intentionally staffed well under twenty-five with some of that grant money. It's just the precise locations of them may vary as uh, may vary.
Yeah, specifically with AGR certainly, but I mean, who knows? There could be, there could be something unrelated to a, a grant. Where the board um, you know, instructs administration to staff at, say fifteen um, for some reason, right?
Brian?
For the public, not myself. Could you remind us what AGR stands for? It's achievement gap reduction and. Yeah, and it, it, it used to be sage. So um, in, in the days when it was sage, um, the classroom size was a required component. Um, to be eligible for that grant money. Under AGR, uh, class size is one of multiple. Levers you can pull um to help with um. In, in schools with uh, with higher uh socio-economically challenged populations.
Andrew?
And I'm, this, I realize this may come into play um later, but just as people are. You know, people are gonna be starting to think about, you know, think about space and we're probably gonna start getting calls and. Emails probably um immediately. Just um. Can you tell me roughly how, what, what is the square footage of District Office Building?
I don't have that on, at the tip of my fingers.
I got it this time. Can we get that to you right after? I'm afraid it, it would take me a little while to dig that one up. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we can move forward.
I think Chuck's gonna talk through the, the next steps, but I wanted to just begin with a couple of points. Um, we recognize that these discussions will cause anxiety for our staff and for parents and for community members. Uh, once the task force presents their recommendations, there will be opportunity for feedback. From students, from staff, from community members, from parents. We recognize that change is needed. We have two major issues that we're facing, a fiscal cliff. That begins in August of twenty-four and declining enrollment. Lori Blakesley had shared, uh, she dug up that birth rates in Wisconsin have declined by seventeen percent. So again, this isn't just a Green Bay issue. This is, isn't just a Wisconsin issue either. And while change is hard, uh, we as staff are really focused on the opportunities. What comes out of this is potential for greatness, to turn Green Bay into a true destination. District. And that's my hope of what comes out of this work coming ahead. So uh Nancy and Chuck, if you could talk us through next steps?
Yes, thank you. What a great segue. And I, I, it basically, you took the words right out of my mouth. I think this is a great opportunity. Uh, and there's challenges leading into it that, that are not uncommon. But it does provide an opportunity to really um refocus on student learning in the best possible ways. So um, I think it's all positive. Um, the next step is, and, and you as the board are the deciding. Uh, body for all these decisions. But it's vitally important to get the community involved at this point and share, the next step is to share this information. With the community uh through the task force, starting uh this week on Wednesday. And, and get, start to get their head around what the challenges are with Green Bay Public Schools financially. And withdrawing enrollment. And then what the opportunities are and for them to understand. And some members will have now more knowledge than others of how great the schools already are. And, and how to improve them, or they'll have ideas on how to improve them. Others will be brought along and we'll do that on a. On a quick uh basis. I think we have eight or nine scheduled meetings uh over the next few months. With those, with that group and uh intend to educate them on all of the information shared tonight. And then start looking at options, looking at solutions that they can bring back to you hopefully with a. With a unified recommendation or several recommendations for how to move forward. And then again, it's, you know, the ball ultimately is always in your court. But this, this piece I think is very exciting, getting the community's input, getting their. Uh, getting them first of all educated because this is a large business. Again, it's, it's like running a, the city essentially. Of facilities and getting them to understand all of the options, all the challenges, all the. Uh, things we've been discussing tonight. Yeah, you know, the yeah buts, the capacity is this, but. Uh, what about AGR? What about this? What have, you know, and, and get them uh very knowledgeable on all these little. Uh, facets of, of the education business. And then um. By spring, by May, coming forward with a recommendation to you. Uh, from the committee, not from staff, not from ATS and R, but from, from the community. On what they think are good options. And then you'll have that opportunity to, to. Sit with that, I think, over the summer and, and get input from the rest of the community, from parents, from teachers. Uh, from people at the grocery store talking about this and, and really. Get a chance to get some in-depth information on, on how people feel about those options. And maybe that will ultimately involve a, a different option. So. Um, you know, we're kind of in the middle of the process and I think we're getting into a very exciting part. Not that I don't mind gathering data, but I, I think sharing that data. And getting input from your community is, is really uh an exciting component. So that's next.
Just some clarification on the timeline. Uh, what our goal is, um, is to have the facilities task force presented. Present to the Board of Education their recommendation at the work session in May. And then have public comments in a variety of ways, but actually physically at a meeting. At the regular board meeting in May, so May twenty-second, public comments and then board discussion. With the goal of the board making some decisions at a special board meeting on June fifth. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing us to do the study for you. We really have enjoyed the process and enjoyed working with your wonderful staff and team. And we look forward to the next portion.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. This is a huge amount of work and information that you provided us. So. Any other questions before Brian?
I just want to add, I think it's fantastic how members of our community are stepping up for this community, for the. Work, the task force on it. I mean, this, this is another indication of how Green Bay has. Stepped up to support our students and support our buildings and our staff and our school district in general and. I want to thank and I'm sure the rest of the board joins in on this. Thank the community members that have stepped up for this because. It's gonna be a lot of work and it it's just showing their commitment. So, thank you.
Andrew.
And I I just wanted to clarify too with the, so with the. Committee where, you know, there'll be plenty of information that'll be provided, but they are. It's an advisory committee to the board and they are, they'll be. Basically completely free to make their own recommendation, correct? So they may say. Yep, saving money is important, but neighborhood schools is more important to us, or they might say. Hey, having bigger schools, you can do so much more here. They could say that. And then it's up to up to us also then to review the data and so forth. But is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. This is the task force work. We're going to become, we're going to come with some preliminary options as starter points. But what we typically find is you never end up with. Exactly what we started with because it's a process of their understanding and you have all the cultural factors that. That come into it and and things that you value as a community and all of those things. This has to be your community's decision. This is not our decision or your staff's commission decision. This is your community's decision. That they, as that task force representation, work together to find what is the right fit for you. This is not. Coming from the other side. It's their work, definitely. James.
Just a question for you, leveraging your experience and running this process and other districts. Would, how would you advise the board to be as constructive as possible? A leaving, staying out of the work, the task force work, right? But informing the the task force of. Some of the things that the board values, right? Andrew spoke to that and. You know, it's been my experience in business that, you know, governing bodies say, here are the objectives for the business objectives that we're trying to achieve. Go figure out how, right? Now I get the task force is all about the how, but. How would you advise the board interact or inform? The the task force of some objectives and some criteria that we would value and. Use as part of our evaluation of the proposal, right? Because Andrew's right. I would hate for a task force to run six, eight weeks, right? And then for us to come and be put on the spot in a couple of meetings. And say, well, we don't value your proposal. Now what, right? And I would, I would, I want to avoid that situation. So. I I I would see us potentially as a board taking on the work. To come up with some key, not directives, but some policy statements that we would envision, but I don't want. To constrain, right? And I know that there's a tight rope to walk there. But I want at least to allow us to surface our individual. Things that we see as either showstoppers or things that we want to see out of this process. So that they they at least know where they are diverging. And can, in their proposal, explain why they're diverging from what we pass for. So.
I think about what happened with the county board and they put the task force together to talk about the maps and the redistricting. And the task force brought their proposal to the county board and it had two additional districts and the county board is like, we are not. Creating two additional districts. There's no way. And they threw out all the work that that task force did. And I think that's what we're trying to avoid. If they're, you know. I think it's silly, but if crossing the river is going to be a barrier that we are never. As a board going to vote on, then I think we need to make sure that the task force is aware of that. That being said, I think it's really important. We let them do their work and tell us, tell us what they do. But. You know, from a guiding principle standpoint, I like three. I wouldn't do more than three, you know, but. Chuck, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I think someone mentioned it's a tight rope and it really is. I, you don't want to restrict the work of the. Task force and I certainly understand, you know, if you've got. If you've got non-negotiable showstoppers that. You know, and my recommendation would be in our, in the past, we've had the board basically stay. Stay out of the process and we've had board members attend a few meetings, but just as audience and not participate. You know, obviously, we've had, we've had board members or board chairs make opening statements to the. To the task force, thanking them for their participation and. You know, if if I, my recommendation would be if as a board, you can come up with a few. Items that that and values and that you want to share that you think are important for them to know upfront. To avoid that situation of, you know, throwing out all the work at the end. That would be good to do and maybe you as a board can come up with a few and I don't know if you can do it this week, but. You know, we've got a couple of meetings before we get into the meat of discussions of options. So there is some time, but I think, you know, yeah, sharing that information with the board would be valuable. But trying to stay out. You know, and not be perceived as controlling the process because. You really want your community to take ownership in it.
James.
So I I agree, I would do then that. We're talking only about a few items and I think what I would suggest is. That we share with facilitator first, right? And make sure that there is. We're not encroaching, right, into that how, but we're also communicating. You know, some some things that are very important to to the process up there. So.
Sorry, didn't.
You know, I I I'm willing to take on the work of creating a a thought starter and doing some socializing with. The the board members so that we all have an opportunity to contribute. And, you know, through, you know, appropriate means, come up with some directives.
So James has already vocalized some of these concerns to me before the meeting and we did, we have had a little bit of discussion about this. But now we, now that everyone is on the same page with that, I think we should open that up. And I I I trust James to accumulate that and and then, you know, put put something together. It'll be carefully, carefully done. Yeah, I mean, we we, I think we all agree. We don't want to weigh this task force down. From the work that they've been asked to do. So we'll be very, very conscious of that. I just want to reassure you and Chuck. So, well, James and I will talk about that. We'll get back to the board a little bit and then we'll see what we'll come up with. How's that?
Yeah, and you know, I think, and you're absolutely right in the thought of. You don't want to put too hard of a finger down on the. On it, right? And as long as they are, as you said, principles or recommendations, because the interesting thing may be. They may come up with something that, because you may say, oh, we don't want to do this, but they may come up with some idea that you go, oh. I didn't think of that in that way. If they do this, that may actually work after all. So. You know, I think you, certainly you want them to know your values. But you also want to be careful that you don't let them, you know, just allow them to be free in their. Their ideas and I I would be careful of physical constraints. I mean, like, I know you gave the river thing as an example. I'd be careful about that one because depending upon the configuration. It may or may not be okay, right? It depends on how much and what's happening and what it is and. It may be very specific to the solution. So.
It's been historically.
I know that one's there.
It's been historically impossible.
I know, I know. And believe me, as we've been starting to look at options, that blue line is right down the middle. And we're very cognizant of it and and of its effects.
Here I thought, here and here I thought the Mississippi River is the only one you couldn't cross.
Laura.
I also just wanted to, I agree with everything that Spencer said and I appreciate you taking a lead on that, James. I think. Our district mission though is also has to always be at the forefront and I think that. We can always go back to, okay, well, this with the task force, which you guys are probably already on this. But you know, does this align, this plan that you guys are recommending, does it really align with our mission? Is it really going to be this? For all of our students or is this really going to just be for these amount of students? So I think that is a huge guiding. Statement for us as we move forward in the project and as it comes to us too to think about that.
We actually had started a guiding principle statement. Excuse me, already that had kind of that was referencing yours and and we're tweaking it a little bit now to better incorporate. Your actual wording. So, yeah, we we were already going there.
Andrew.
Just wanted to make sure that. It isn't lost you that the, you know, I think sometimes. Sometimes people look at the river boundary like. You know, something that is just. Just a quaint idea that has long outlived its usefulness. And if, but there are practical applications. There are certainly the, you can draw. You can draw a line between two points that are. A thousand feet apart and one of them is, one of them is a. Walkable situation for a neighborhood school. And another one, even with a pedestrian accessible bridge is not something you would do. With certain ages or if you did it, you would bust across it and that creates a whole new dynamic and. And expense. So I think there's certainly room to, you know, there's certainly room for for creativity. And certainly we have people. Crossing the river to choice to different programs around our district. But it is both, you know, it is both a. It it is both, both includes historical traditions, but also actual practical implications.
Absolutely. And and we have recognized in, as we're doing again, these initial options, which is probably not where it's going to end up, but they're starters, right? That that that's very much been on our mind and the idea of trying to minimize that crossing as much as possible. And, you know, some of them do that better than others. Some of them are completely clean and some of them have a little bit here and there, but certainly that's been a. Goal because we recognize at a minimum the transportation issues associated with that. Besides all the other factors and and Josh has been doing some preliminary boundary checking for us with his. Boundary software to see how some of these preliminary options start to work. When you change things around and what the impacts are and does this create a donut and it'd be better if you did this? So you didn't have the. You know, all of those kind of things. He's helped us tweak these a little bit with the boundary software. So. We, you know, that they they have been at least preliminarily vetted with what we know. At the time and then they're going to change from here as they're in the community input occurs.
James.
Uh, this may be a silly question, so excuse it. So having looked at the numbers. Right? And I'm calling these numbers, keep the lights on kind of numbers that you presented tonight. And doesn't represent any initiatives that would, you know, improve the. The future, you know, educational readiness of the facilities. So. I'm used to being presented a budget guideline, right? Because looking at this task. I can imagine a set of proposals that range from here to way out here. So as. As a board whose primary responsibility is very fiduciary in nature and and taking care of taxpayer dollars. I would hate again for a proposal that's well outside of our range. To come up and be the primary proposal that then we're put on the defensive. And we're, we're struggling again with having to jettison a lot of work. For something that if known in advance, we might have altered the solutions. I, it's not a how. But everyone has to live within constraints. So.
So what we're, what we're doing with the, with, we are coming with, I think, well, I forget now if it's four or five that we've ended up with. With as as we get into a couple, couple meetings from now. We're going to be, after the initial, we're first going to do a quick overview of them. So everyone can kind of get their. Arms around them in general. And then we're going to spend a couple of meetings going over them in the the starters. In more detail and they are going to have costs associated with them that are related to. Both, for instance, if a a building intends to go offline for one reason or another. There's, there is a yearly savings there in. What's the term, Josh? I can't, operational, thank you. I can't spit that out. Operational savings, right? That you want to get a handle on that. And then there's at least these high priorities, facilities costs we're talking about. And we've been having some discussions about. Well, do you just put the high priority or do you put medium priority in there too? Or do you take a certain person? If you know you can't afford all of that, do you take a certain percentage of it and say you're going to reallocate it once you know exactly what you're doing? We're still trying to. With your team, trying to fine tune exactly which pieces of that go in there. And then also some. For the buildings that may be considering additions, we're going to start to put. We'll start to do some just basic preliminary plans for how that might work and some costs for those. So we're going to end up with some, you know, not. You know, super, super accurate, but general idea cost numbers for each one of the options. That then as we develop options from there, we'll be able to take that data and put it into the various options that they have. So. If they end up, you know, I doubt this will happen, but but say they go, I want three new buildings. For whatever reason, right? But that cost is going to show up in in there and they're going to get an idea because the. Our first, this coming Wednesday, we're we're doing this, this presentation, basically. And then the following two weeks from there, your staff is doing demographics and budget. So they are going to know fiscally where you guys are at. And and, you know, if there's a decision that you want to give some kind of a. A range or a recommendation to them even from a principal standpoint. About where roughly, and maybe you don't know that yet. I'm not sure. You know, where roughly you want to be. If that's a guidepost for them, maybe that's not a bad thing either. So they don't go so crazy far afield. And maybe it's a big range for now. And it gets fine tuned later. That's for you guys to think about. I'm not really sure if you want to go there or not, but. Josh, did you want to say something?
Yeah, and perhaps that could be, you know, you're working on your instructions to the the task force. You know, perhaps the board wants to go like not increasing the tax rate as a result of any capital projects or or something like. Something like that, just to give them some balance budgetarily.
So actually hearing this, I would love to be able to work with the district because. If the board had access to the assumptions that went into any financial modeling around these. That would help us go, wait, no, put the mediums in there as well, right? Because I want to be conservative in modeling versus. And just being able to. And just being able to see that potentially uh, as you guys work. So whenever I hear, I'm gonna work with. The district, the district's outside of task force as well. So I'm going to determine. You know, hey, can we see that uh, as well if it helps? In the evaluation, um, because yeah, Josh, you're right. You, I'm looking at that level, right? To say. Um, you know, we can't change the mill rate, right? That that's, that would be a principle that I I think would be. Really easy for us to come up with and help us evaluate the cost of solutions.
Brian.
I wanna. Kind of address that question with it as well. This is also. A once in a generation opportunity for us to make sure that while we're being fiscally responsible and we're doing it with respect to. The the funds that the community has invested with us. There's also opportunities to really reshape some issues on here. And I think we also need to take into consideration. That we're meeting our goals, making sure our students are prepared for the future, for jobs, for education, for all opportunities on that. And. That when we're looking at options and consideration on that, there there could be some capital expenses on there and that. That's priced out, but we're, we've got two goals on there. One of them is being fiscally responsible and and the fiduciary responsibility with. The funds, but also in making sure that we have top-notch schools so we can. Make sure our community students have all of the resources they need. And we can do it financially, you know, in a, in a strong manner. So. We can make this district the district of choice and the other concerns with it. So. I think we just need to make sure we're aware of that as well. If we have one person or one board member on that. We still have to bring it forward, you know, as the, for those considerations. So, thank you.
Laura.
You have to hit your thing.
Sorry, I agree with you, Brian. Um, I just want to mention that there are other districts in the state who are going through this process. Everyone, you know, they're they're forced to kind of reevaluate the structure of their of their district, just like we are. Um, due due to all kinds of processes, they're out of our control. Um, we can't control the birth rate, you know, we can't control what the state legislature does. Uh, so we we have to. Um, you know, we we have to do this work. Um, so we know the change is constant in our school district. Um, change is hard. But when I think about this task force and this process, I think about the 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 that what we're doing. Really is is talking about the future. Um, we're talking thirty years out, we're talking about the generations to come. And um. And it's really, really important that we keep focused on that. And we're gonna have to be kind of brave. Um, you know, because because we're talking about people's schools and and of course that is hits right at your heart. So, um. I think this board is up for this. I I trust everyone on this board to understand the the depth and the weight of this process. And to roll up their sleeves and get at it. Um, and I agree, I'm incredibly grateful to who the people on this task force. I I think um, they're gonna understand this mission with the help of of your facilitator and. Um, I look forward to seeing what they come up with.
Thank you. I think, are we, any other questions or concerns, info we should? Sounds great. So it sounds like you're gonna be working on that kind of a few guiding principles and maybe range of. Of things without, and I know you're gonna find that right balance for us to to be able to give them a little guidance and and impetus to go forward and do great work. So.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Yeah, you did an awesome job.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Chuck. Josh, Josh will help you. You got it? Okay, so that was our big item for operations. We've got three more things we need to get through. Um, contracts under Wisconsin statute, section one eighteen point two four, that's gonna be school district administrator contracts. Vicki, is that you?
Yeah, this just, this ensures we're compliant with state statute. And allows us to move forward with issuance of administrator contracts. According to the timeline that's set forward by the, forward by the state. So we'll be bringing that to the next board meeting.
Is there any discussion on this? Brian.
Is this a new policy or is this just reconsideration of one that's existing?
Not policy, this is admin contracts.
Okay, anything else? Alrighty, this will be brought forward at our regular board meeting for a vote in two weeks. Okay, um, next item under operations is item C, the purchase of sentegix and single wire. And this is gonna be Josh. And Amy. Oh, Amy's remote. Hi, Amy.
Good evening, everybody.
I think it's mostly Amy, actually.
Yeah, this has been a great team effort. Um, Josh started this work last year. And then this year we continued it and um, teamed up with Chris Coller as well, our safety and security manager. He's been a big help too. So what we're looking at is we've heard. From building admins, um, other leadership throughout the district that we really need. Some sort of visual cues in the case of a crisis. So for example, if um, you're deaf or hard of hearing. You very well may not hear a fire alarm, but you would see the flashing lights, right? Same thing. We're looking for that if we have a crisis in the building such as um, an active shooter. So, sentegix and single wire are two companies that work very close together. Sentegix um, consists of a badge that staff members would wear. And Josh, I should have given you some of those to pass around today. Um, if I remember, I'll try to get those at the the board meeting. But it's a badge just like the ones we currently have that has a button on it. And if you push that button, um, I am three times, thank you. The badge will notify. Personnel within the district or within your building that you need assistance with something. The three click means you need something that is. Um, an emergency, but we don't have to make the whole building aware. So maybe there is an incident in the hallway. Or a student falls down and breaks their arm out on the playground, three clicks, you get assistance. If you click the badge eight times or more. That is where you need to notify the whole school of a situation. So that might be an active shooter situation. Tied to sentegix or along with sentegix, they have. Strobes that are put into place and the strobes you can see on the attached, but the board attachments, you can see it kind of looks like a. Um, fire alarm or a uh, smoke detector. And if you click that button eight or more times, it's going to cause that strobe to go off. The strobes can be. Programmed to do different light colors. So we would work with Chris. Building for admins, their team to figure out, you know, blue means this, green means this, red means that, whatever it might be. That is sentegix. That's one, so that's like half of the solution. The second half of the solution is where single wire comes into play. And you can think of single wire as more of the software, the backend components. The single wire solution allows us to take. The notification system that's going through the bat, through the strobes and push out messages. To district displays, computers, TVs, digital signage, um, through our Zoom phones. Our P A systems, um, possibly. The walkie talkies that the monitors walk around with or the building admins. So it's the software system. That ties everything together, that's taking place within sentegix with those badges and those strobes. Um, it's my understanding that right now, there currently isn't anybody in the state of Wisconsin that's doing this. So like many things, Green Bay would be. A leader in the state, um, showing, you know, our. Our need to really make sure that our students and our staff members have the the ability. To be safe within our buildings and then get that help that they need when when it's called upon. That's a very high level overview. Josh, did I miss anything or can I clarify anything?
Yeah, that's, that's a good overview. I wanted to add um, a couple of things. Um, first, with the visual cues. It's not just, you know, for students and staff who are hard of hearing, we have. Um, spaces within the district where it's extremely difficult or impossible to hear a P A. So think about a gym class. Think about um, in the middle of um, orchestra rehearsal. Right? Where that P A's going off, it may be a very important message. There's nothing in the classroom indicating that there's any action to be taken. Also, um, you, we run into issues um, with these. You know, the secure the building situations, which uh, you and the community are aware of. Um. That happened every now and then, usually because of a situation within our community that um. You know, one, no one's allowed in or out, but business as usual within the school, right? That's a fairly common thing if the police are dealing with a a situation in the neighborhood. There's no e- external indication on a building that. So a building's in that situation. So so we do have, um, we do have staff. Um, potentially attempting to enter buildings when when they shouldn't be entering buildings. And I I'm thinking specifically of, um. It it could be dangerous in in certain situations, right? You imagine um, if if the police are inside because of a a potential issue. And if someone's coming through a door, I I would hate to see a. Would hate to see a staff member get tased because they didn't know that the building was in that sort of a a situation. Um, the strobes are wireless. So, you know, we we've recognized for several years that we need. Some way to visually represent that there's an issue in the building. Um, all of the solutions we had seen to this point involves running wires. Everywhere you needed a strobe, um, which is would be impossible and cost prohibitive. Um, these, one of the things that makes a solution attractive is that they are wireless, they go up anywhere, they're battery powered, they're constantly monitored. Um, that's part of the agreement we have with them, the the remote monitoring to make sure that they're working. Um, so you can stick them really anywhere, including outdoors on playgrounds. In athletic venues outdoors, um, in parking lots. So we're able to cover a lot more of our. Um, I guess of our sites. So that's, that's one thing I I kind of wanted to. To bring up. And then secondly, what this also allows for is a centralized platform to manage these sorts of events. At a school, because right now we've got essentially forty-three different systems for. For uh, for handling these, these secure the building situations. So this allows us to centrally handle it. Um, through Chris Coller's office. Um, and have it handled immediately.
Josh, can I add in some of the questions that our admins asked of us um, at our last admin meeting? They wanted to know what buildings this would be placed in and we stated all district owned buildings. And they were also curious about like, does this badge track me, right? Um, and the answer is no. So each staff member in our district would be provided one badge. That would work throughout the district and it works, the badge communicates with the strobes. So once you get. A certain distance away from the strobes, the badge stops working. So when you leave school and head to the gas station, go pick up your children, go home. The badge does not know where you are.
And to clarify, it doesn't know where you are unless you click the button on the badge.
Yes.
Actively tracking, even if you are within range of a stroke.
Good point.
And this is S R dollars we'll be using to fund this?
Correct.
Okay, Brian.
I assume that the data will also be able to be um, recorded. So so you're in a building where you notice. You're getting more calls for assistance, um. That would help, that could potentially help with staffing concerns or rotations of. Monitors, knowing where kind of the hotspots are in in buildings to. Address that. And with that access, would that information be available to the principals if requested?
That's a really good question. Um, I will note that and ask.
Last year, actually.
Did you? Oh, good. What did you hear?
They do, um, they do have a reporting system that can make that information available. So you can know if, yeah, if there are hotspots within your building. Um. What kinds of incidents are happy, happening where, um, that kind of stuff.
I think about back to my days when I was in the classroom. And every time I needed assistance, not every time, most of the times, it was like in the hallway. In the cafeteria. It was someplace outside of my classroom where I wasn't by a phone. So think about how that will expand our ability to support our classroom teachers.
Right, or you're handling a student that's having some significant behavioral issues and it's a problem getting to a phone to to make that alert. Because you, you know, you're dealing with the the student's own safety and the safety of others.
Laura. I'm curious if there's other districts that have used these systems together and if you've had any feedback on that since we can't do Amazon reviews.
Did, uh, the the um, the majority of the the customers, the company's based out of Georgia. Uh, majority of their customers are in the south and southeast. Um, we spoke with Henry County in Georgia. Last year, um, we've got a couple of other references in Georgia and Georgia, Florida, Georgia, Florida and Texas.
And all larger school districts, forty-eight schools plus.
Yeah, those are county school districts down there. So they're just.
Large.
Very large. It would be like. Instead of Green Bay Public Schools, Brown County School District.
Nancy, and then we will go to Brian.
So like if you're in a school and there's something going on and you click three times, then. Will all the other things that are in place go into place again? You know, like if you, like. When I was teaching at Elmore, there's team A and team B. So. So this, all those other things will still be in place. It's just, um, okay.
Yeah, the answer was yes.
Yeah, it's just an easier way to call your safety team, um, essentially from from the teacher's end. And then it has the added benefit of adding these visual cues and the centralized management.
Okay, James.
Um, the request is the one point eight million, is that all cost four or five years? Or is there some recurring cost after the initial one point eight?
All costs for five years.
Oh, thank you.
And that is for both um, the sentegix and the single wire solutions together.
So the one twenty-three for the software cost, that's not an annual license, that's for all five years. Okay, thank you.
Correct, yep.
Um, in response to, it kind of ties into the ability to record data on this. Would it also record the response time? So I think of when I've gone to stores and hit the little button and sometimes I waited five minutes. Or sometimes I waited thirty seconds. And also, who's able to respond? Because I'm assuming that if we have the the badge or the clicker with it, that's tied to whoever the person is, but. When they deactivate it, when the situation's been resolved or a a way to record who's responding and the length of time.
That's another good question. Josh, I don't know if you asked that, but I know the, the system. Like, if I push the button three times and my S R O officer responds, they might mark that they're responding on. Their device before they actually get to me. If that makes sense.
Right, um, one, one feature of the system is if you're a teacher and. Or if you're anyone with a badge and you're, you call for assistance, you are emailed a um, a survey asking about. How how it went.
I I guess I'm concerned because at times we hear um from staff members that support hasn't come in in a timely manner. And I think this just provides us the opportunity to improve on that with with numbers, you know, to see that okay, we're we're not fully acknowledging a situation, maybe because of whatever lens we're looking through at it or you know, different perspectives. But if I'm in a building and I've asked for help and it takes ten minutes for someone to get there, that's an area for us to improve on. Um, and it will give us that that quantitative data to use that. And just as looking at the physical locations of it, the numbers and the time response and who responds, I think is a key point for us to look at for it. So if it's available, then it should be.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that and see what we can find out.
So it's a three month implementation. This would be ready for the start of the school year in fall.
Yes, they gave us a ninety to a hundred and twenty day rollout period from the day that we put the P O in.
Okay, Brian?
We would also be able to control the message. So if you have a kindergarten class and they're using their their computer to display something, we want to make sure that it's age appropriate for whatever the message is that comes up on a building to building level or classroom to classroom. Does that make sense or?
Yeah, that absolutely makes sense. And then to have the possibly images versus text, depending on on where we're at. But I don't think we would push out necessarily to student computers at the the little age, but still to have that awareness of what's unlike digital signage or the TV or the smart board, absolutely.
Yeah, I think he was more concerned about the the teacher's device if
Mm hmm.
there was a takeover and and the teacher was presenting to the classroom.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're not scaring kids, which which makes sense. And you know, the same goes for the P A message too, because there's audio that that you record and program to go with each of the scenarios to you want to obviously, that's going to vary from school to school.
Yeah, and sent sentegix will stick by us with um our onboarding. So they will be with us when we pass out badges to the staff members and then support us through, like if we have an Alice training or if, you know, whatever kind of drill, this system would be put into place for that so that we're not only giving our staff members the opportunity to to know what this sounds like and feels like, but our students as well.
Okay, anything else? All right, this will come to our regular board meeting in two weeks for us to vote on. Um, the last item under operations is item D, purchase of uninterrupted power supply. And I'm assuming this is Josh and Amy again.
It is. Um, going to R F P for our uninterrupted power supplies, also known as U P S's, is a typical component of our refresh cycle. Typically, it's once every five years that we go out to um, R F P for this purchase. Our U P S's are, think of them as like a a backup battery for all of our network equipment. So if we have a short time where the power is down, the U P S kicks in and powers everything up so that we still have our phones, our security cameras, access to the Wi-Fi, so on and so forth. Um, we went out to bid for the U P S's just recently. We received quite a few bids back. Um, and you can see the selection criteria contains both E rate eligible costs and non E rate eligible costs. And of the bids that we looked at, we had five qualifying bids. We were offered a ten year warranty with the U P S, which doubles the lifespan that we currently have within our refresh cycle. Um, this purchase is to be made with E rate funds. And if you're new to the E rate game, there's lots of steps that we have to go through. The first thing that we go through with E rate is called a Form four seventy. And that's where we um, seek our services. We say this is what we're looking for. Then we can, we citamously go through the R F P process. Once we choose who we would like to move forward with, then we fill out a Form four seventy-one, which is where we request from um, the government through U S A C, we request the funding. So right now we are at the point where we will be requesting funding with board approval here. And then we sit and we wait until we get a funding commitment letter. And the funding is to reimburse eighty percent of every dollar that we spend. So of the dollar amounts that you see listed, the district with the assistance of E rate only pays twenty percent of that cost. The rest of the eighty percent is refunded to us. So we will not move forward with purchase until we get a funding commitment letter from E rate stating, yes, we will give you eighty percent back. And then we budget for the remaining twenty percent in our twenty-three, twenty-four school year budget. Questions on this one?
James?
Across all the vendors, are we comparing the same brand of U P S? Are we comparing apples, apples, or are they different brands?
They were different. Um, different brands, different battery types.
Okay, so um, can you explain why so much emphasis on oh, in the rubric for um, local availability? Because that seems to take a very uh, low priced solution and kind of knock it out of contention. Um, so uh, why is local availability um, such an important factor?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, a lot of the vendors that were putting in bids from out of the area, they wanted to come in and work for like ten consecutive days. Right? Well, we know that we can't necessarily do this work during the school day. So having somebody local provides the ability for them to I don't know, come into our buildings from like three to seven, right? Work outside of when our students are in building. Um, it also provides us for just that local support. So we did have a few vendors that were new, the Quality Power Solutions. This is a new vendor to us, but they're out of the Madison area. Um, and then Cap, Cap Data and C D W, of course, are close to us as well, um, but not headquartered here. Good question.
So just to make sure I understand, they're doing the installs.
Correct, correct. Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. This will come um, to our board meeting in two weeks for us to vote on. And that concludes the operations committee agenda.
Thank you, John. Um, that is, that concludes our our agenda for tonight. Um, I um, I just want to kind of remind everybody that the state convention is next week. Vicki and Laura is going to come down for a little bit. I'll be down there. Um, and participating in then the delegate assembly and a very, a whole bunch of other things. So that's next week. Um, and other than that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, W W W dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.